I'd like to call to order the October 6, 2015, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And as always, we will begin with pledge of allegiance and prayer. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll join me in prayer. Thank you for another day of wonder and beauty in Buncombe County. As our trees are painted with the brush of orange, red, yellow, and brown colors, help us to appreciate the balance and harmony of nature and the planet we all live on. Put the hand of healing and comfort on the communities of Roseburg, Oregon, Newton, Connecticut, Blacksburg, Virginia, Columbine, Colorado, and Aurora, Colorado, as they deal with senseless killings and violence. Particularly bless our friends in South Carolina, especially Charleston and Columbia. Charleston probably more than Columbia for their violence and also the flooding and unusual weather. Charleston was already recovering from emotional scars of some angry murders that we regret and we hold all of the community in our prayers and thoughts. Help us to be the best people we can, show love, compassion, and sense of justice to all people at all times. And God, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, right now, and have the opportunity to help other people. Amen. In accordance with our code of ethics adopted by the commission, all county commissioners have the duty to obey all applicable laws regarding their official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety or the appearance of impropriety in the exercise of our official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? If none, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before our board today? The chair finds that none of the board members have affirmatively responded, and each of us will have an obligation and duty to vote on each item before us. Next, we'll go to public comment. The time limit for comment before the commission is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, phone, and email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or pertain to matters upon which we might act. Any individual speaking during public comments shall address the entire commission. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Anyone who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that's previously been presented to the board. We, I don't think we have any public hearings scheduled today, so this will be the time we'll hear from the public. Does any member of the public have any public comment tonight? Mr. Rice, Ms. Baldwin, anyone else wish to speak to board or wish to speak publicly? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You know, I've got my purple on. Child abuse, maybe adult abuse, a lot of abuse. I want to read you something here. In 1974, Walter Mondale promoted the Child Abuse and Prevention Act, which began filling massive amounts of federal dollars to the state to set up programs to combat child abuse and neglect. From that came Child Protective Service, as we know it today. After the bill passed, Mondale himself expressed concern that it could be misused. He worried that it could lead states to create a business in dealing with children. I want you to think about that. You can always go back and read what Mondale said. Okay, after Mondale, which promised large amounts of federal dollars to stop it, child abuse in epidemic proportions, it was not long afterwards that individuals began to be charged with almost unbelievable crimes of sexual molestation, especially at daycare centers, from the McMartin case in Manhattan Beach, California, to the Kelly Michaels case in New York, New Jer- or New Jersey, I mean, to the alleged sex ring in Wichita Key, Washington, I believe. Dozens of people were rounded up, tried in what could only be called kangaroo courts, and sentenced to multiple life sentences to prove that there is some justice in the court system, at least at the state level. Most of those convictions have been overturned on appeal, as appellate judges systematically ported out that most of the defendants did not come close to receiving fair trials, that the prosecution coached witnesses in stubborn, or prejudiced, and generally created witch hunt cases or conditions. Unfortunately, the spirit of Mondale's act lives on as state officials, and it goes into other cases. And what I want to point out to you is county commissioners, they are room for this justice center to see the same abuse as what we are talking about when we talk about the justice center. Because when you line up all these different agencies and put them together, we are looking at a massive production here. But for the court system, let me tell you, if you think corruption don't go, you read what I've been reading for years, and you're going to find out that it's right here in Buncombe as well as it is anywhere. And what you need to be aware of is, a lot of times, DSS could not grow if it wasn't for Child Protective Services. And you know, a lot of federal dollars come in here, and I'm wondering just how much is going for this building out of what I'm talking about when I'm talking about this kind of money. So I think it's worth commissioners investigating where the money's coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Baldwin?
Today, you'll be voting to spend $1 million on Buncombe County STEM High School Phase III renovation. I want to remind you that when each of you took office, you took an oath to uphold the North Carolina Constitution. In Article 9, it says, "The General Assembly shall provide for a general and uniformed system of free public schools wherein equal opportunities shall be provided for all students." But in Buncombe, we have an unequal education. Let me explain. It seems that there's equity or equal opportunities when it comes to athletics and PE. Whether it's the $4 million turf and track replacement for our high schools, or the $800,000 replacement stadium lighting, equity means every high school gets one. Last week's school board meeting revealed that there's also equity when it comes to food labs. Every high school will get a renovated kitchen for Foods 1 and 2 classes, designed to prepare students for life and for entry-level food service work. But our highly motivated and high-achieving students at the six traditional high schools have no equity when it comes to science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM. The county STEM High School, Nesbit Discovery Academy, will serve only around 5% of Buncombe's high school population once it reaches full capacity. In spite of cost overruns, the STEM school has turned out well but serves a privileged few, currently about 2% of Buncombe's high schoolers who can get in via the lottery. Missing from the school district's long-range plan is STEM labs for our six traditional high schools. For example, there's no Project Lead the Way or other robotics or engineering labs at those six high schools. But STEM labs in every school is an attainable goal, just like the food labs. Consider that a Project Lead the Way lab would only cost about $30,000, which includes teacher training, in comparison to the $525,000 price tag estimated for the TC Robertson High School food lab renovation. This would be a small price to pay to advance our students. The school board already paid for an architectural study for the food lab renovation. Now, a design team will be hired. Never mind that BCS has two full-time architects on staff. Money could be saved in many ways on this exorbitantly priced food lab renovation, invested in STEM labs or robotic labs for our high schools. Why not partner with AB Tech's culinary arts program to teach students food service skills? As you know, college, community college classes are free for all 16- to 18-year-olds. Go to the Grove Park Inn, Biltmore State, or Tourism Development Authority for money to help pay for the job training these food labs will provide for the hospitality industry. Ask them to chip in and support the program monetarily and with skilled teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Any other public comment tonight? If none, we'll move on to good news. Jan Shepherd, Health Director, and Stacy Wood, information officer, will explain a recent award that Buncombe County was privileged to get.
Appreciate you having us before you this evening or this afternoon. I'm Jan Shepherd. I'm your Health Division Director. And we were recently awarded a Child Health Recognition Award. So I want to give you a little context around the campaign we developed. So on the screen, you'll see that we, Buncombe County, has the highest number of unimmunized kindergarteners based on non-medical exemptions in the state of North Carolina. So we know that puts our community and our children at risk, and we developed an immunization work group to address this issue. Because of the work of this work group, we were awarded a Local House Department Recognition Award for an immunization campaign. This was given to us by GlaxoSmithKline Foundation in partnership with the North Carolina Public Health Association. These awards are given every year to health departments that do innovative programs around child health issues that have outcomes. So we submit an application, and we won this year. We're very proud of that. Our campaign was developed by our Health and Human Services Communication Team, which includes Stacy Wood and Ben Atkins, along with some of our health staff, Dr. Mullendorf, Ellis Vaughn, and Sue Ellen Morrison. These materials we've made readily available to all our public health peers across the state, and we've even included our private medical practices. So I want to bring Stacy up to the podium right now for you. She's our Public Information Officer for Health and Human Services. She's going to explain some of the materials that were developed.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Hello. Again, I'm Stacy Wood. I work with the Communications Team in Health and Human Services. And this is an exciting award that recognizes the work that we've been doing to improve immunization rates in our county. So the first strategy that we focused on was supporting medical providers, as they have conversations with parents around immunizations. So we, through a partnership with Mahak, held a screening of a film called "The Invisible Threat," and over 100 medical providers were in attendance at that event, and they were ready to have the conversation as well. So through that event, we recruited four pilot sites, where we were able to pilot our materials and have face-to-face conversations with providers. And we saw measurable results, that providers, as a result of both the materials and that face-to-face interaction, were more confident in having those conversations with parents about immunizations. And we also wanted to educate young parents and children about the importance of immunizations. So we know that they might not have context for why they are important for the health of a community. So we created, this is one example of the Wall of Heroes that we created, where parents, well, it was mainly for children, but parents also enjoyed writing their name up on a stick, you know, this piece of paper showing the role that they played in protecting our community against these very dangerous vaccine-preventable diseases. So that was a big success in the practices that we piloted the materials in. And I will disclose that this is my son. So we also developed stickers to, again, engage children in thinking about how they contribute to the health of themselves and the health of a community through immunization. So we know that public recognition works, so we applied that principle to this campaign in Buncombe County, and this award is an acknowledgement that we might be on to something there.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your wonderful work. Dr. Green, manager report. The initials are WP.
That's right.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Did we do the consent agenda?
We did not. Thank you.
Chairman Grant, I should have asked this in pre-session, but I would also...
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Could we also pull up the item around the approval of the housing projects?
Yes.
I don't need a whole presentation. I just wanted to be able to make a comment.
Thank you. We'll do that. And let's go ahead, thank you, Commissioner Newman. Let's go ahead. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as we have published it, with the exception of the Resolution to Solicite Bid's of Sale of County Property, Resolution about the housing projects, and the AB Tech Capital Project Ordinance? We will discuss those in more detail. Been a motion by Commissioner Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones to follow the agenda with those three exceptions. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then by seven to zero vote, we will follow the consent, the agenda as we have amended it. Dr. Green.
Thank you. I wanted to give you a brief update on Waste Pro. We were here several weeks ago, and I asked you to give us a 45 to 60 days to see if we could turn things around. We are down to, I mean, we have days with no calls, one or two calls on other days. But we've made great progress, and Waste Pro's been very responsive to all the calls that we forwarded. I want to thank Planning and Solid Waste. They've been tremendous in dealing with these calls. And Waste Pro's been very good at getting back to the folks, still working on regulating the schedules, but the waste is being picked up. We've reached a new phase in the project now. We've identified all the quote "paying" customers that they have, and now it's time to start notifying those who don't pay that they need to subscribe for service. They started that last week, where they're doing like a door tag to let people know that, you know, this is today's date, and as of date, certain, unless you subscribe for service, we'll no longer pick up your waste. I think that's a really reasonable, very systematic approach to letting people know how we need to move forward. If we get calls, we'll explain to them, should they not choose to subscribe for service, how they can take their waste to the landfill. But I do think we've made really good progress. I think your calls have probably diminished significantly, and certainly ours have too. If you get calls now, they're probably going to be as a result of the door tags, and wanted you to understand why those door tags are being hung now. But I think we're making good progress. Any questions?
So you're saying that Waste Pro ran a program, they didn't know who their customers were?
Well, they, if the trash was sitting out, they picked it up, and they've done that for a lot of years. So a lot of people have had free waste pickup for a long time. They've really targeted it, and now have identified all the paying customers, and we're going to work on the ones now that have had free service for five years.
That's certainly a step in the right direction, but it's amazing to me that they took up trash from people that did not pay.
It's, and we, some people have had a really good service and not had to pay part for a little while.
Good run.
Yeah, it was a good run. That's a great idea.
Well, did things have to end, I guess.
But I do think we're definitely moving in the right direction, and...
Dr. Green, I have one, well, I have seen the small trucks around.
Good.
The new investment, and they are going in a lot of the rural areas and obviously being effective because we're not getting the calls. And I'm just grateful that we are, you know, that this path, you know, avoids a costly lawsuit. And I'm hopeful that they continue the good work, you know, and we're going to continue to hold them accountable, and I'm grateful for the investment, so...
We will hold them accountable, and I think they're absolutely dedicated to making this a very smooth-running operation.
Thank you.
And how much are they investing?
They owe, it's...
Do you remember the number?
It's been a while since I was here telling you that. I bet it's several hundred thousand dollars on the trucks and the GPS and the, just the technology they have in the vehicles.
Smaller, more nimble trucks able to get through smaller areas and curvy roads.
All right.
Any other questions for the manager?
Thank you.
Okay, if not, thank you, Dr. Green. Our first item of new business is the Resolution of Intent to Convey Property to Asheville-Buncombe Education Housing LLC, an entity owned solely by Eblin Charities. So Dr. Baldwin, Mr. Murdock, if y'all will come up and wherever's going to present, we appreciate, this is a big need, and we appreciate you stepping up to help us partner and make it happen.
Mr. Chairman, after they've described the project for you, we'll tell you what we need in a motion, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
This is really one of the most exciting projects I've certainly had the opportunity to be a part of as superintendent. And I'll also say that, in my experience, it is rare where you bring anything to the table that you have 100% collaboration and various groups just beating each other for seats at the table. And that's the best way to describe this particular project. Slightly less than a year ago, we were approached by the North Carolina State Employees Credit Union about the prospects of establishing a teacher housing complex at affordable rates for teachers that would represent the western half of the state. Previously, there had been three projects on the coast, very successful. And so when we received that call, immediately, we made a number of various connections, the first with, certainly with Dr. Green. And I need to preface this by saying that this is a collaborative effort between Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. But I want to applaud the response from the county and the support of the county. Certainly, one of our other great partners is the Eblin Foundation, and when we approached Mr. Murdock over this, again, he was one of those that was sprinting to the table. And we are looking forward to an incredible opportunity for both of our school systems to help attract high-quality, especially young professionals. Neither one of our systems, because I believe you can look over the past decades, and you're going to find Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools as two of the top high flyers in terms of performance in the state of North Carolina. So we do not necessarily lack from the pool of especially young professionals wanting to work in either system. The challenge is the housing and finding affordable housing. So this is what this project stands for, and again, just want to appreciate, I want to thank the support of the county.
We too, just want to thank the county and certainly the partnership we have with Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools, bringing Eblin Charities and the Eblin Center for Social Enterprise as a partner in this. And, you know, the Eblin Center for Social Enterprise was set up to do things that Eblin Charities may not quite fit direct assistance, but still have great benefit to the community, such as the Andrew Institute for Leadership and Public Service, where we do leader cast and bring great speakers and thought leaders here, you know, to our community. Also, the graduation initiative, which is a partnership with Buncombe County, that has seen, within seven years, a 49% reduction in dropout rate. And when Dr. Baldwin came to us with this opportunity, you know, we certainly, we did sprint to the table. And we want to thank Dewey Andrew, one of our board members, for hitting this up. And one of the great things is, as the partnership continues, and there's a small revenue stream, the revenue stream comes from the rent for these apartments, all that will go back to the schools through Eblin Charities, through our Food for Thought program, through our Tools for Schools, our eyeglasses, anything that teachers need, all of that will go back into our educational programs as well. So again, thank you for allowing us just to be part of this great opportunity. Wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen. It's important. Dr. Green?
I just wanted to assure you, as you do this transfer, we've put all the necessary protections in there, so that if anything should change going forward, the property does revert back to Buncombe, and we don't expect that to happen, but we knew it was a county asset, and we needed to protect it. So I think it's a good document, ready to build on as soon as we say yes.
So let's go into some specifics. It's a four-acre piece of land. Where is it located? And who's going to pay? How's it going to come about? Where do we go from here?
As far as the location, probably the, coming from Buncombe County Schools, I'll give you some boundaries according to our current schools. It is directly behind Mr. V. Han's office, and I think everyone knows where Jerry's, where the castle is for emergency management.
Irwin area, yes.
In the Irwin area. It's directly across from Irwin High School, also across from West Buncombe Elementary School and Eblin Intermediate. So we believe it's in a wonderful location, both from the standpoint of the Asheville City System and Buncombe County System, because it's in the center.
And the State Employee Credit Union will build these apartments and then turn them over to this new organization run by Eblin to, as property managers.
This will be available to teachers, and city school teachers don't have to live within the city, they can live outside, I take it. So it's open to everybody to give them the affordable housing and encourage particularly beginning professionals to have the opportunity to get their feet established here.
That's correct, Chairman Grant. 24 two-bedroom units, the opportunity for both of our school systems to use that as an incentive, especially to recruit those hard-to-find licensure areas such as STEM, such as special education. We think that's going to be a wonderful tool for both systems.
This will be a rental unit, and so they will have a period of time they stay there, and then there'll be other people turnover. Is that right?
That's correct.
Any questions about this?
Yes, so there's two pieces of property mentioned, and one is four acres, the other's 10 and 1/2. And looks like we're also making sure that we have access to one of those properties for EMS training. There's an 80-foot, looks like an 80-foot easement.
There are easements in, both for access to the acreage where the housing will be built, and then there is an adjoining, I'm not sure, it says 10 acres, Michael wouldn't be right about that, but that still stays with the county. One of the things I would say about the four acres, and not that we're going to put any pressure on State Employee Credit Union for at least 18 months, but there's room for expansion here.
Okay, thanks. And that's a good catch. It's four, not 40. That would be a pretty big development. That would have a lot of expansion possibilities. Okay. Any other questions or comments about this program?
I just, so remind me when we're going to be cutting the ribbon and folks are going to be moving in?
Well, hopefully, we'll be, once we get the land transfer, we are pretty much ready to go. Dewey has been working hard. Jerome Jones is on our group, all putting this together. So we've got permits in place, and as soon as we get this ready, as soon as Dr. Baldwin gives us the okay, and hopefully, we're...
gives us the okay, and hopefully, we're ready to move in in July, right? This next July.
That's great. So exciting.
All right. We have a resolution that is in our agenda. The gist of it is to declare the four acres and the 10-acre lot to be surplus property, that we will convey it to the Education Housing LLC, and then they will start working on the, we will do a deed, and they will start working on the project to make this happen. Is someone want to make the motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Frost, is there any discussion about this project or the resolution? If none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the resolution, as suggested, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the resolution is adopted, and we'll get that property transferred as soon as we can. Thank you so much for your good work. Next, we have the Resolution of Intent to Solicite Bids on Sale of County Property, the Ferry Road Property.
I would really appreciate if we could have a closed session to discuss before you start addressing it.
All right. And I think in pre-session, there was no objection to that, so is there a motion to go into closed session for purposes of economic development discussion? Motion by Commissioner Frost, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Belcher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we'll be in closed session. Do we expect, we don't know if there'll be action or not. I think that will...
We do not.
That will depend on our discussion, so we will not commit to action or no action. We will be back as soon as we do, if our closed session.